Lady, how are you?
Appointed officials who are part of this meeting, if you could please come down. We are going to start the meeting. It is 6:01.
We have Lucky is calling in. That's what I understand.
It's 6:02. Okay, we're going to begin. I'm going to start with the land acknowledgement. The West Hollywood City Council acknowledges that the land on which we gather, and that is currently known as the city of West Hollywood, is the occupied, unceded, seized territory of the Gabrieleno Tongva and the Gabrieleno Kich peoples. I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is a special meeting. It is 6:03. We have a study session. And this is specifically on nighttime safety. Can I have a roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Erickson.
Present.
Councilmember Horvath.
Here.
Mayor Protam Shine.
Present.
Mayor Meister.
Here.
Board member Sotiel.
Here.
Commissioner Balbon.
Here.
Commissioner Steele.
Here.
Board member Field. Board member Lazarus.
Present.
Please note for the record that Board Member Jenkins, from the LGBTQ+ Advisory Board, as well as Eden Luna, from the Transgender Advisory Board, are currently absent. We are expecting Board Member Alexander, from the Transgender Advisory Board, on Zoom. And we may have Councilmember D'Amico join us. And I will let the mayor know.
Okay, thank you. Can I get approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with that? We have an agenda. Yep. And we are going to go to item four, study session on nighttime safety. And we have Danny Rivas, our Director of Community Safety, here with us to give us a report.
Great, thank you. And good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protam, councilmembers, commissioners, and advisory board members in attendance this evening. My name is Danny Rivas. I am the Director of Community Safety for the city of West Hollywood. Also joined on this item is Yvonne Corker, Director of Community Services, Andy Levano, Community and Legislative Affairs Manager, Moya Marquez, Community Programs Coordinator, and Sergeant Yost, from our West Hollywood Sheriff's Station. We wanted to provide some background before leading into the discussion and public comment portion of this important item. So earlier this year, a joint subcommittee comprised of members of the Public Safety Commission, Women's Advisory Board, LGBTQ+ Advisory Board, and the Transgender Advisory Board, suggested that a special study session consisting of the city council and representatives from each of these bodies be held to hear from the public and outline steps to address nightlife safety. As you all are aware, the city is home to a large number of entertainment-oriented businesses, with more than 200 establishments on file. In the beginning of the summer of last year, concerns at businesses that serve alcohol for onsite consumption emerged as pandemic-related restrictions were lifted and businesses were allowed to fully reopen. There was also media coverage of claims of individuals feeling that their drinks were spiked or roofied at West Hollywood entertainment venues, and reports were filed and investigated by the West Hollywood Sheriff's Station. Following these concerning reports, the city did issue a press release in August of last year emphasizing the seriousness of the claims made and urging anyone who believes they are a victim to reach out and report directly to the West Hollywood Sheriff's Station. In addition, city staff from our Neighborhood and Business Safety Division, along with our West Hollywood Sheriff's Station, held a meeting with entertainment venues to bring to their attention recommendations to increase training, safety, and awareness concerning alcohol and illicit drugs. As a result of the concerns reported and research completed by city staff, the city became the first city in California in November of last year to pass an ordinance that requires alcohol servers at alcohol establishments that serve, excuse me, that at businesses that serve alcohol for onsite consumption to complete a city-approved bystander intervention training. The city partnered with the UCLA Rape Treatment Center to provide this educational training that addresses the issue of drug-facilitated sexual assaults, date rape drugs, and promotes the proactive role that employees can take in the prevention of sexual assaults. The bystander intervention training program launched in March of this year, and I am happy to report that more than 1,900 employees have completed the training to date. It is anticipated that more than 2,300 employees will be trained through the program by the end of this calendar year. The city has also implemented a range of ongoing efforts to assist in creating and maintaining a safe environment in nightlife business establishments that serve alcohol. This includes a manual titled "Best Safety Practices for Nightlife Establishments", which is used as a training tool for nightlife business establishment owners and managers to maintain their businesses in a safe manner, free from illegal activity. The manual can be viewed and downloaded directly from the city's website. Additionally, the city funds an entertainment policing team, which is made up of West Hollywood Sheriff's Station deputies, who are primarily focused on entertainment and alcohol-related law enforcement issues in the community. At present, and in response to an uptick in community concerns, the Entertainment Policing Team, Major Crimes, Narcotics, and Special Victims Survivors bureaus have been increasing patrols and plainclothes operations at entertainment venues throughout the city. The West Hollywood Sheriff's Station has also received specialty training from the UCLA Rape Treatment Center related to sexual assaults and is scheduled to complete another round of training beginning next month and continuing once a month for the remainder of this calendar year. The city's Neighborhood and Business Safety Division also has dedicated code enforcement officers that work nighttime shifts seven days a week, who partner with the Entertainment Policing Team to address nuisance and municipal code-related issues. Personal safety, for nightlife safety and sexual assault prevention, and resources can also be found on the city's Community Safety Department webpage. An awareness raised concerning social responsibility and alcohol consumption is communicated through an effort called "Imbibe Intelligently", which promotes safety tips and messages regarding alcohol consumption within the community and for visitors enjoying nightlife. Tips to imbibe intelligently are provided on the city's website, on outdoor media in the community, and on the city's social media platforms. So city staff also just concluded its first drink-spiking testing strip distribution event at 4:30 PM today, following a city council directive. And staff plans to schedule additional distribution events in the near future. Before closing in this presentation, I'd like to now just turn it over briefly to our city attorney, Lauren Langer, to provide some brief remarks and guidance to steer this important conversation.
Thank you, Danny. Good evening, everybody. The purpose of tonight's meeting is a study session. And study sessions are great because you can really spend the time to focus and dig into one specific topic without having to fit in a bunch of agenda items. And it's even better to have all of these bodies here in one room to really be able to have this important and robust conversation. The purpose of the study session is to help the council on a plan to deal with nighttime safety issues in West Hollywood. And so it is a great opportunity to get everybody together and have that conversation. I just wanted to remind all the participants in the study session that tonight is really to talk about the issues generally and to help advise council and to not focus on one specific business or issues at one particular business. And it's most helpful to have a robust conversation with everybody to talk about the issues generally and help guide the council as they move forward and come up with ideas to address this important discussion. So with that, I will turn it over to the mayor to continue the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. So if, right now, let's see if we have any questions. Danny, if you'll stay, just, I want to see if there are any questions of staff. Raise your hand and we can... Okay? No questions? You're free. So I would like to ask, what I'd like to do is start with commissioners and board members, then go to public comment, and then go to council for questions or comments. And I'd like to start with Commissioner Steele.
Thank you. First of all, I'm really happy that we're having this session. I think it's super important. And I'm glad that this myriad of bodies are here, as well as the public for comment in person and on Zoom. I'm looking forward to hearing all of the voices and all of the stories and questions that are brought to the table to see how we can work together to coalesce to improve nightlife safety across the board. Some of the particular interests that I think I'd love to see us chat about tonight and that I certainly will get into a little bit more specifically as we carry on is victim advocacy for folks who have experienced assault, communications and marketing around these issues. I think we've got a really good starting point, but I do think it's a starting point. So I know, Danny, and thank you for that report. We were talking about the social media and the graphics and those things. I know there's been quite a bit of conversation around that, about developing, developing things that also are representative in the fullness of community, making sure that you've got the spectrum of the LGBTQ+ community represented and things of that nature. So those are the things that I intend to chat a little bit further about and see how we can move the needle on. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Balbon?
So I will echo Jackie's comments. One of the things that I think is most important is, I remember when we started having discussions about these sessions. Keely, you came to a Public Safety Commission, and that was September of last year. And we've made some good steps. The thing that I still worry about is the process that we've heard people who believe that they've actually been drugged have to go through is exhaustive. They're left without any advocacy, and potentially, the time that ticks by leads to the fact that we can't really find out what happened to that person because it's incredibly time-sensitive. And I think everyone in the process is very well-intended, but I don't think it has the best outcomes for victims. And I'd like to make sure that we take steps to ensure that advocacy is front of mind. And it's front of mind for every victim of every representative in this community. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Board member Sotiel?
Yeah, hi. Thank you for letting me be part of this. About five years ago, when I first started getting more active in domestic violence awareness, I started going to public safety meetings then. And at the time, alcohol was a big part of it. A lot of assaults and things happened when people were drinking a lot and then couldn't report it. So I'm glad that, you know, we're talking more about how the drinks could be, you know, tested. And I have another idea here that I think will really complement it that's been going around as well. So I think they, it seems like the drinking and what I remember hearing from the sheriffs and the public safety, and which has continued, is the big problem. And now, of course, with them being spiked is even bigger, so... Thank you.
Thank you. Board member Lazarus?
Thank you. I'm excited to hear about all the initiatives the city's putting together in order to kind of resolve this issue. But I want to hear a lot more about what we're doing from a prevention standpoint. I was lucky enough to sit in on one of the trainings that we had, the bystander training sessions, and it was fantastic because it felt enlightening to hear both sides that were pro and for these trainings in the first place, which come from the individuals who have to take them. I want to know how we're measuring effectiveness of any of these trainings and how we can be looking for solutions to prevent these things from happening in the first place that aren't going to be detrimental to the businesses and community at large. Thank you.
Thank you. Board member Field?
Thank you, Mayor Lauren Meister, and thank you to staff and everyone for this culminating. So, you know, for me, this isn't just a hobby. This is something I lived through. Prevention, right? We have condoms available readily and free so that people can take those when they're out. These test strips should be just as available and free. You know why? Because if someone can take their pinky and see what's in their drink by literally putting it either from their straw, their drink, on a card, and seeing if there's GHB ketamine or even ground-up horse tranquilizer pills, in my case, they won't continue to drink the drink, and they won't get blacked out, and they won't be assaulted later and left on the floor. This is not just something that happens to be. This is something that happens, excuse me, every night. It's not just in West Hollywood. It's not just in LA. But guess what? If we are an inclusive city and we are a safe haven for LGBTQ people, it's very sad to me, the number of survivors, who, by the way, the majority that I have spoken directly to are queer women. This is not about, this is not about the gender, the age of the person. These are human beings. When they're in a situation where they're in a club and they're in a bar and they're having fun, if a friend of the fun brings them a drink, that doesn't mean that the drink is safe to drink. How would they know that? Literally, they're gonna have to take one of these cards which fits in your pocket, and they can literally take their finger, their straw, and see if that changes color. Not only will they then have physical evidence that a crime has just been committed, but it makes it a lot easier when you go up to the manager of the bar or the establishment you're in, and you want to look at the security footage. You're not looking at 12 hours. You're looking at a time duration of when you had that on your card and it changed color. And perps who keep doing this, and believe me, they're getting away with it. Perps who keep doing this know it's easy to do. GHB and ketamine is very cheap to buy. People can get it from their animals. They can get it to drug humans. And they're getting away with it because it's easy to. Because, guess what? They might wait around and see if that person really passes out or blacks out. They love to steal their cell phones because when they steal their cell phones, there's no way for them to call 911 or even a friend when they wake up. GHB and ketamine takes away your motor skills, and it literally inebriates the person to where they don't even have a memory of what's occurred. And if you want physical evidence in the body, wow. Good luck getting all the way to Santa Monica to the rape, where you can get a rape kit done because that doesn't happen at Cedars. And if you can get someone to take you over there, that's great. But if you're by yourself, wow. How are you gonna get there? Probably not a Lyft or an Uber. When you don't know what just happened, you've blacked out. And you know something bad has happened. These drugs do not lessen your system for days. They lessen your system for hours. The only way to actually prosecute these crimes is with evidence. And if we don't give a direct way and an outlet, not only for prevention, which is these test cards, but also a way for these people, whether it's Block by Bach or different, you know, plainclothes people in the bars and establishments, these women, men, non-binary people, they don't even have a way to go get help. They are left alone. And it's happening all the time. So I'm very glad, I agree with Jackie Steele, Commissioner, that this is a stepping point. I'm really glad it's not just me handing these test strips out in a backpack. Today, it's been very powerful to go around to these bars and establishments in West Hollywood with Mayor Protam SepiShine and a lot of our boards and commissioners. These will save lives. Because some of the people that survive this commit suicide. I know. I've spoken to their family members. Thank you.
Thank you. Board member Luna, would you, would you like to make any comments about? I know that you weren't, okay, so we'll save it for later. Okay. And do we have Board Member Alexander on the phone, or?
We do not, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, do we have public that would like to speak?
Sorry, my button wasn't working. We have public comment both in chambers and on Zoom.
So why don't we start with Zoom and then go to chambers?
Okay.
Our first speaker on Zoom is J.D. Wagner, followed by Wes Sigmuller. J.D., you'll have two minutes. Please press star six to unmute yourself. J.D., go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is J.D., and I was assaulted in West Hollywood last Sunday. I was enjoying a nice evening out with one of my friends, in which a drunk fellow gay man ended up elbowing me in my nose with full brute force that sent me back two to three feet into a glass wall. As a result of that incident, I have had thousands of dollars in medical bills. I have a deviated septum now. Got my nose reshaped by a complete stranger. And I have obtained security camera footage from the pizza on my own. And unfortunately, he didn't make a credit card transaction, so I have not been able to identify the guy. The video has been shared by many kind people within the LGBT community, but that guy still has not been identified. I have gone around to over 10 different businesses and bars asking for security footage, working in coordination with the sheriff's department, which honestly does not have the bandwidth to obtain the footage. So I have to do all the legwork in order to do so. I have yet to accomplish my goal to that end. Fast forward a week later from that incident, seemingly just a strong elbow to the nose. I'm having issues with my mental activity. I can't focus on screen. I can't do my job. I did not work today. I'm seeing a neurologist tomorrow. I'm getting a brain MRI on Wednesday. This is having huge repercussions in my life, and I have not been able to obtain justice. And a fun night in West Hollywood turned into a pretty big nightmare scenario for me. And I understand that I cannot act alone to get what I need to have happen. If there's a bar that has security footage, that guy wiped his credit card when he was buying a drink, and that could be matched to a transaction. I have volunteered my time to do so, to look through security camera footage and offered $500 to different bars in the area, just letting them know that I'm fully invested. I want to, you know, do the legwork for them so that it's nothing on them. But many of them say that they cannot get footage without it being subpoenaed by the sheriff's department. So it's just, it's a really tough process, even for somebody who's proactive and adamant. And I am about seeking justice, and I just wanted to quickly share my story. Many of you all are trying to help me, and I'm super grateful for the opportunity and for being able to share my story. I understand that there are a lot of things going on in West Hollywood, namely, an event that happened on Sunday. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to just share my story.
Thank you, J.D.
Our next speaker is Wes Sigmuller. Wes, you'll have two minutes. Please press star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, everyone. My name is Wes Sigmuller. First, I just want to say I'm really proud of all the survivors of violence that are weighing in on this process tonight and leading up to this. So I'm a, I'm an advocate for survivors of sexual violence and human trafficking. And I've been raising these issues for over five years in West Hollywood. So I'm really happy to see this study session happening. I want to draw your attention to two dimensions of this problem. Firstly, I'm just gonna say, you know, survivors that are men, like, are facing a double stigma when they're sexually assaulted, you know? Like, sexual assault is underrepresented across the board. That's especially true for men because they're also, you know, dealing with the social sort of shame of being like, your manhood being threatened, you're victimized. And so the statistic is one in six men are, you know, victimized by sexual violence in their lifetime. It's really important, all the, you know, all of the advocates for male survivors really dishammer, it's really important to specifically tailor your messaging to men to help overcome those social stigma barriers to them feeling comfortable to report or even acknowledging that it happened. So please, please in your messaging, please include male-specific messaging. That's not to take away from women and, you know, other people that are, that are part of this as well. It's to add to it. So the second thing I wanted to mention is sexual assault happens often in the context of the victim, like, being engaged in some kind of criminal activity. So since 2020, SB 233 has been in effect. That's state law. That provides immunity from arrest for victims of violence, as well as witnesses to violence. So it gives them, you know, limited immunity from arrests for, like, sex work or minor drug charges that they were, like, involved in during the time of the incident. It's to encourage people to report, right? So the spirit of that needs to, like, bleed into this process as well, where, again, you have to tailor messaging that is going to reach the people that need to hear it most, which are often people that are, like, doing drugs willingly, like, et cetera, et cetera. So, I mean, we just saw that with Ed Buck. He was using GHB to incapacitate his victims and his victims. So my last thought is...
Wes, I'm sorry, your time is up. Wes, I'm sorry, your time is up.
This is an important thought, so last...
Let him finish.
Okay, go ahead.
You can have 10 seconds. Is, thank you. Is the interventions that you're going to propose, please make sure that they empower the person, like, when they're not in the club. So, like, those test strips, encourage people, like, take them home, et cetera. Like, that's the way that you're gonna really help people. Thank you.
Thank you, Wes. Mayor, those were our only speakers on Zoom.
Okay, do we have any speakers?
Yes, we do. Our first speaker in chambers is Danny Hang, to be followed by Catherine Eng.
Greetings, Mayor, Mayor Protam, councilmembers, esteemed commissioners and board members. My name is Danny Hang, resident of West Hollywood. I just wanted to speak on another related public safety matter. I know the city passed out these fentanyl test strips, rapid response. But in the back, there's really no clear directions. So if people want to party, they don't have, you know, they have to look it up online. I know that in other municipalities, they have distributed another form of testing, fentanyl test strips, called Wise Batch, where they clearly have a QR code and indicate clear directions on how to use them. I think the city distributes out cards with the green ones. But I can tell you that when I grabbed one of these at Pride, I was not given a card. So I wouldn't be able to know how to use this unless I went online. But if someone is under the influence or they're in the rush to party, they don't have time, and this might, this might not be able to save as many lives as we want. So I just wanted to bring this to your attention. I'll leave these two samples to be passed out with Commissioner Steele. Thank you for your time.
Are you giving it to Danny Rivas? Thanks, Danny.
Thank you.
Thank you, Danny. Our next speaker is Catherine Eng, to be followed by Eric Montes.
Thank you. I'm gonna have to read here. Catherine Eng, resident of West Hollywood. I've worked for several cannabis media companies, and one of the organizations I worked with interviewed workers of the then Lowell Cafe who stated that a patron passed out in the cafe every single day. I'm here to remind council and the city that we are in the process of opening seven more consumption lounges in addition to the Artistry Lounge that is already open. So much of our public safety conversations in the Rainbow District surround the bars and alcohol consumption. And I'd like to remind people that cannabis inebriation is something to consider in this equation. I want to propose a few things. First, I think as we are increasing the number of security ambassadors, I think one should be designated for each lounge during their hours of operation. And ideally, it would be the same one or a designated ambassador. I will remind people that there is no field sobriety tests for cannabis consumption, so both we... so both WeHo sheriffs and Block by Block need to be taught about cannabis consumption and given current, up-to-date physiological information. There is a program similar to ServSafe that has been created for cannabis consumption lounges called Full Spectrum Smart that I think the city should implement. I'm also advocating that the city partner with these lounges to educate their staff about the many resources the city provides, such as free transportation by the trolley, City Line, and even dial-a-ride with notice. And not just that these services exist, but really make sure that every employee and every staff member knows where the stops are in relation to the location, the routes and the runtimes. And if we are working with neighboring cities to coordinate safety for people once they leave our city and make their way home, we need to add cannabis consumption to that conversation. WeHo can and should be a leader in teaching 21st century knowledge about cannabis to the public, not unlike we have been doing for the rights of LGBTQIA communities. With 40 licenses in the city of less than two miles, we know that cannabis will be a large economic generator, and we need to make sure it's done right. Thank you. I speak tonight as a resident, and I will be back here in chambers in a few weeks to speak as your newly appointed Business License Commissioner.
Thank you, Catherine. Any other speakers?
Yes, Eric Montos, to be followed by Nicole Nash.
Good evening, commissioners, advisory board members, Mayor Protam, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Eric Montos. I'm a resident of this community, and I live in the WeHo Heights neighborhood. First of all, I want to thank you all for convening this study session. I think it really shows our community's commitment to addressing public safety and making our residents feel safe. One thing that I wanted to address, you know, I don't drink personally, but I do attend and frequent our bars here in West Hollywood, is that we really need to look at the chain of custody for these drinks. What I'm seeing is that there's a lot of drinks that are going out, multiple drinks to a single person, and then they're being distributed from there. One experience that I wanted to share is there was actually one evening where I attended an event at one of our bars, and there was a gentleman walking around with a couple of drinks, and he was trying to give the drinks out. I don't want to question anyone's intention, but that kind of piqued my interest, so I watched to make sure that, you know, that no one was given that drink. So I think that, you know, chain of custody for drinks in these settings need to be considered. The other thing that I think needs to be considered is buy-in from our businesses. Without buy-in from our bars and restaurants in this community, nothing that we do is going to be effective, so we have to have their buy-in. And then lastly, I think it's worth noting also the need to basically distribute out the services that Block by Block provides, specifically their walk-home escort service. I like to consider myself pretty involved in this community, and I actually did not know that that was an option until just recently. So I think that we need to do a better job as we expand our Block by Block presence that we make that service known, and also to our residential areas as well. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole Nash, to be followed by Shane Nash, and that is Shane as our last speaker.
I am yielding my time. For Shane, thank you.
Thank you. Hopefully, I can get this in four minutes, but this is a lot to say. I'm going to describe some of the details of my personal story after being drugged at a West Hollywood bar and sexually assaulted, taken to an ER where I was denied access to make a police report and a rape kit. I was told it was an overtime officer that doesn't work the area, and it's why they didn't have proper training. But in a city council meeting on January 18th, the Sheriff's Department stated that there's no difference within the training when it comes to reports among their departments. When I attempted to make the report, the sheriffs told me, "Rape kit? You don't need a rape kit," after I just told this officer I'd been taken to the ER and been sexually assaulted. When I was finally granted access to make a police report the second time, they sat me outside the station, maybe 100 yards away from the bar that I was just assaulted at. Anyone could have walked by and heard what I was saying and told. And they told me after taking my information that the Rape Trauma Center might have me waiting six hours, and they can't tell me if it's better for me to go now or then in the morning, so go in the morning. I had to not shower in hopes of preserving any evidence of the assault at this point. It'd been four days since I got to properly shower before I got to do a rape kit. Thank God I didn't, because they found male DNA. Once I got to the trauma center, they told me I could have been seen right away and that the sheriffs are the worst when it comes to these type of cases. We all know the Ed Buck situation. The detective assigned to my case asked me what I had for breakfast that morning during the police interview, but when it comes to asking the security guard that found me, there isn't a time when I was found on the report, not even the name of the manager who went in with them. Meanwhile, the detective told me that the club thought I was a Chilean pickpocket, and that's why they didn't want to help you. But none of that is in the police report, but I have it in a text message directly from the detective themselves. The detective also told me they would bring in a potential suspect for questioning several times and never did, still hasn't, and it's been eight months. Their excuses were COVID scheduling and other cases took priority. This is what the city of West Hollywood is paying, an estimated, and I say estimated because we don't know the real numbers, $300,000 per officer. I can't say publicly more what happened and the details of my case. It's so shocking that the detective has yet to bring in the individual just for questionings out of respect for the other victims that came forward and told me they experienced it with this individual too. I know who did this to me. To the citizens of West Hollywood, I implore you to look deeper into this. The city council increased their budget by 1%. Sorry, I lost my place. To the citizens of West Hollywood, I implore you to look deeper into this. The city council increased their budgets by 1%, and the sheriff reported false data to the media to try to soak fears in our community in West Hollywood. They have 40-plus representatives in their PR department, and I thank the city of West Hollywood for finally taking a stand. I owe my life to each and every one of you in this room. The detective and the special unit kept telling me and telling me, "We have limited resources in our department. It's why things are taking so long." 40-plus PR representatives sounds very limited to me as well. I can only imagine how many people have been silenced. I can only imagine how many people are scared. I can only imagine how many events, prides and various things that happened in West Hollywood for our community that has only had the illusion of safety, but not the reality of it. I do not subscribe to the idea of giving up. I am here to do the work. West Hollywood means more to me than anything in the world, and I'm not here to tear down the nightlife or get rid of the Sheriff's Department. I'm here for reform. I'm here to build it better and safer. West Hollywood's biggest export is entertainment. Let's entertain our community safely. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was our final speaker, Mayor.
Our last speaker. Okay. So now I will ask my colleagues if they have any comments or questions, and then we'll see how much time we have left, and then we'll go into discussion. Would you--
Sure.
Go ahead.
Sure.
Thank you. Councilmember Erickson.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor, and thank you to all of our esteemed commissioners and board members for being here. It's great to see you actually in person, but it's great to hear your stories, your experiences, and reading the reports from your commissions, from your advisory boards, to see the full fruition of your work going into what's happening now is this really important next step. So I want to thank you for that dedicated service and not letting it go, because we cannot let this go. I also want to thank the members of the public who came in to speak both here on Zoom as well as in person. I did reach out to J.D. Wagman after his story was shared with me, so I will be making some comments about and questions about that. And I do want to make a personal thanks to Shane and Nicole for being constant advocates, for making sure your story is heard, your experience is heard, and make sure that whomever did this to you, of which I'm going to be asking specific questions about tonight, can be brought to the full punishment of the law and held accountable. What happened to you, Shane, is not acceptable. The way you were treated is not acceptable, and the way that we want to reform our city to ensure that anyone and everyone who comes here, whether it's like what J.D. said for a fun night in West Hollywood, or maybe you're going out with a friend or a family member or anyone else in your community for maybe a night just to have a drink or hang out with them, that should never be the end result. And so you have my personal promise and dedication to never stop fighting for you, Shane, as well as anyone else in this room. And whatever we need to do up here, we will do. And I am going to be asking the sheriffs tonight that if they have a specific suspect in mind for your case, and they have not brought them in for questioning in the next 30 days, we should reevaluate what they're doing with their Victims Bureau and look at that funding to ensure that people are getting whatever they need to make sure any victim in this city is held safely accountable, and we can punish those individuals that perpetrated that. So that's going to be some direction I will be giving as well, part of this study session. But in specific questions that have been brought up, Danny or someone, can you please walk me through the process for how someone would access security footage? What's the typical process? Can businesses say no? Obviously, they can say no, but how does it usually go about? Something happens to me, like, say, in J.D.'s case, he's elbowed in a bar and everything ensues. What's his process to getting insured? He could get that security footage.
And thank you for the question, Councilmember Erickson. I would like to bring up Sergeant Yost, who is the sergeant that oversees our entertainment policing team, to answer that question.
Good evening. In regards to your question, when a report is taken, detectives, that report is passed on to Detective Division or Detective at the station. It is assigned to a detective. They then go out and do investigation and research, pulling the video from each business. Then they put that all together.
And then the individual can see that information? Like, what's the timeline? Like, this happens on a Friday? I can see it on a Monday? How long does it take?
It all depends on when the detective receives that case and when they go out and are able to obtain it. I came from investigations, so I do know that there are times where you'll go to a business and they may not have access. I know West Hollywood is completely different, where we do often have that video right here and now, but I have, in cases, had to wait for a person to show up to be able to obtain that video, and sometimes it takes several days to get that. So from there, once we have that video, then we can proceed and move forward with that.
Great. What is the process for, or maybe you can walk me through the types of trainings that people go through? I've heard comments tonight about an overtime deputy who doesn't have that type of training to then backtracking, saying, "Well, that deputy actually does have that type of training, so there's no disconnect there." What's the real answer when it comes to these types of processes? Chain of custody, so on and so forth.
For, in regards, so we do--
So if I, if I come in and I am a member of the LGBTQ community, or specifically perhaps maybe a man, an individual who portrays male characteristics, but maybe has female body parts, right? But let's say something happens to me, right? What is the cultural sensitivity training that the sheriffs are supposed to be going through, whether or not you're an overtime deputy or a regular deputy?
So we, I don't know the exact training as far as what we have. I know we do put on training. I'm, honestly, I would have to get you answers on what the exact training is for that type of training, but West Hollywood is going through training with the Rape Treatment Center. We're putting that together. We're actually in the process of scheduling dates for that within the station here.
Great. So you don't have specifically, and maybe you do and maybe you don't, but you don't have, I am aware that you have an L and a G sensitivity training, a lesbian and gay sex sensitivity training, but perhaps maybe not transgender, non-binary, bisexual, the full spectrum of the community training? We might need to look into that a little bit more?
I know they are in the process, because I've seen some documentation, but I don't want to speak out of place and say that we have that training in place yet.
Great. So if we could get an answer on that, that would be great. When it comes to rape kit testing, what is the chain of command? What's the process? How does it work? We hear multiple depictions on how this occurs. Someone comes into the sheriff's station and says they are a victim of sexual violence. What's your first step?
They would be taken, or they would go to the Rape Treatment Center and be tested.
In Santa Monica?
Yes.
Okay.
And then from there, that is evidence, and that evidence is then collected and put, placed in our evidence, and then moved forward from there and is then given to the detective to--
And then the detective takes it and then prosecutes. Great. So there is no local hospital that any individual can go to to get a rape kit?
To my knowledge, not just the Santa Monica--
Okay. Thank you. It was a rhetorical question. I knew the answer, but I just wanted you to say it on the record. But then, my last question regarding something Commissioner or Kat Eng said, is overconsumption of cannabis, and maybe this is a conversation for you, Danny, so you're off the hook for right now.
I have questions for--
I'm still finishing my questions for Danny, though, so I'm in my line of questions.
Right, so he can come back to finish those.
Yeah, Danny. Don't go too far. Mayor Protam wants you. Danny, when it comes to overconsumption of cannabis, can you talk about what the licenses require for those consumption lounges? For example, do they, what types of trainings do they go through? If not, that's something we'll take up later, but what's the process for overconsumption and stuff like that?
Yeah, so there is training. There is a condition applied to any sort of consumption lounge, right, that does go through the Business License Commission approval process. So as a part of their condition, we do require training. So that is something that the business, that we are essentially asking the business to put together, to have their employees ensure that they're going through that in terms of being able to identify signs of somebody being overconsumption of cannabis, et cetera. So I do believe that there was a direction in the past as well, though, that was provided for us to kind of meet with the business community, cannabis establishment specifically, and try to see if there are some viable options in terms of maybe a dedicated association or nonprofit agency, right, that would be able to put together a training, and that would be something that we could offer and work with the business community on, similar to what we just did with the bystander intervention training. So that is something that we would look into, but there isn't a state mandate in terms of requiring that for consumption lounges. And I think one of the speakers had mentioned a little bit earlier that there is no state law in place in terms like there is for alcohol to define, right, when somebody's overconsumed in terms of cannabis, but--
Great. And, thank you. And then, and I don't know who answers this question, but maybe it's Mulder. Is he here? Oh, you're in the back, sorry. I would like to know if there is a suspect in question for Shane's case, and I would like an update on that, and I would like to know what your next steps are for bringing that person in for questioning. So however you answer that, whenever you answer that, but if there is a suspect in question and you have not brought them in to be held accountable, that needs to occur. Period, end of story.
I can answer that. I will work on figuring out what the answer to that is and find out a little bit more information. I will reach out to Shane.
Thank you so much.
What the information is.
Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mayor. So Detective Yost, I have some more questions for you.
Yeah, don't sit down.
Sergeant Yost.
I was there a long time. I'm used to that.
All right. Councilmember Erickson, it's my turn. So going back to the question that was asked about the timeline. The first question was, what is the timeline? I'd like to know for getting footage. You said, you know, a detective, a police report is filed, a detective gets the case, and then they reach out to the business or they walk to the business. Is there a telephone call that's made first? What's the first point of contact?
Honestly, it really depends. They could make that phone call, or they could walk to the, in this city, they could walk to that business and reach out to them.
Do you, thank you. Do you have a specific protocol for a best practices standard? So let's say you get the police report, detective, within two days, three days, this footage needs to be requested, because I'm thinking that, you know, maybe we should reach out to our businesses and see how long they keep their footage and work with your department, and your department can create a best practices to direct all of the detectives to follow, so that if the majority of our businesses, let's say, let's say, one business, A, they only keep their footage for 24 hours, or let's say, more likely, maybe 72 hours, then detective must reach out to the business within that time to get the footage, because when we're talking about evidence, it's crucial that that happens within a certain time. I think that would be helpful for victims. It would be helpful for preserving evidence, and it would be helpful for your department to do a better, you know, better work. Protocols are always good. So that's one direction I'd like to give tonight. Secondly, the-- Secondly, the question that was asked about overtime training versus LASD training, I think the answer I'm looking for is Shane was referring to when he went into the sheriff's station, there was an overtime person that essentially didn't take his police report. And later on, I actually had to get involved and ask then Captain Ramirez and Lieutenant Mulder, our captain now, to make sure this police report is taken. And during a council meeting, we were told that the reason that this didn't happen the right way is because it was an overtime person, and that in the future, the people that take police reports, that interact with the public are going to be our deputies and not overtime deputies. So, two questions. Has that change been made? I'm seeing Captain Mulder saying yes. So now it's our deputies are in the front. The second question is, and I think that's what Councilmember Erickson was trying to get, so I'm going to ask you directly. Is the training for overtime deputies the same as the, our own deputies?
Our station specifically receives more training because we are in West Hollywood, but there's, overall, the department does put on training.
What is exactly the training that our deputies get versus the overtime deputies?
We have the Rape Treatment Center training.
Okay. What else?
I would have to get what all the training is for you. I don't want to-
Yeah, thank you.
-speak without saying what we have exactly.
Can you report that at the next city council meeting?
I will.
Thank you. And I was told by Lieutenant Lapkin that the, we do have training for transgender sensitivity training that was stopped during COVID, and that that is going to be picked back up again. I know you didn't have the answer, but she had communicated that to me, and Danny is saying yes. So I would like to know a time definite of when that training is going to happen. And before that happens, a direction I'd like to give is for that training to be taken to our LGBTQ plus board, as well as our transgender advisory board, for any input they have, and maybe it needs to shift, get expanded, so maybe a report back to those advisory boards, so they can give their input of, yes, this is training, it's great, or, you know, maybe we have this advice. I think that is a great way to utilize our boards in that sense. So the rape kit training, or actually, the Santa Monica Rape Treatment Center training that I asked our deputies to take, thank you so much. I gave that direction at a city council meeting last year, and I appreciate the station for cooperating with the Santa Monica Rape Treatment Center. What I would like to know tonight, and if not tonight, at our next council meeting, is how many of our deputies have been trained for that training? Because I know it was an ongoing training. Do you have that answer?
I do know I have that in front of me.
Okay. Great. So, that's great. So, next question. As a result of that training, I would like to know what protocol has changed to create more safety for victims and better results for our deputies. So kind of looking at, you got the training, now what's changed? Maybe a report back on that would be helpful.
I have some questions now, I think. Thank you so much. I have some questions for staff regarding the fentanyl test strips. Does anyone have information on our stock of fentanyl test strips remaining that don't have the instructions on them?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Protem. My understanding is there is an informational card or insert that does provide the instruction, so definitely need to speak with staff. I know this was our first distribution effort in terms of getting that out, and so we'll make sure to, I believe Commissioner Eng had mentioned, you know, the QR code, and he provided that sample. So I did look it up, actually, on my phone, and I did see the instructions for that particular brand, so we can certainly look into either moving towards a brand such as that, or trying to see if the brand that we're utilizing right now has that capability. But I do know that there are instructions provided.
The direction I would give is we need to move towards the new brand as soon as possible, and I guess we can have that supply, but starting the process is essential now, because who knows how long it'll take for those test strips to arrive. And, you know, if we have 100, 200 left, then it's not a lot. If we have 10,000, and I don't even know the numbers, that's why I was asking, and that's another issue. So that is really important. And did you say with respect to Catherine Eng's comments about the cannabis, the cannabis, here, yes, cannabis inebriation? Have we looked at, I think it is an incredible idea. I think it is wonderful for us to look into that, to see what sort of training, it's similar to the alcohol service training, bystander training, actually, that we can also provide to our cannabis businesses, so I would like you to look into that. And then, I think you mentioned perhaps looking into this full-spectrum smart and giving them a report back to us on what exactly that is, so we can understand it more. As far as block by block, it's my understanding that, from my days on the Business License Commission, there's at least two security guards that are at each cannabis business, and perhaps if we provide a training to the cannabis businesses, like we do for the bars and restaurants with bars, then those security guards can also get the training.
Right. And Mayor Protem, like, the private security for the businesses themselves, right?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They are required to have security personnel there on site. It does vary depending on, right, the type of license and what it is that they're doing here in the city, but they do provide a security plan that outlines. Everything goes before the entire Business License Commission for approval, so absolutely, we can definitely work with the businesses on that.
Great. This is really about expanding that training for, and it is an issue where this is a new area. We are, have been frontiering for the past couple of years, few years, so public safety is ever-evolving. And the other question, let me just go through. Are we measuring, how are we measuring outcomes? Or do we have a measure of outcomes for the training we've provided to the bars, the bystander training?
Yeah, so really, the performance metric that's going to be used is really taking account and look at how many sexual assaults related to drink spiking are occurring in the city. And obviously, seeing that number decrease is the ultimate goal, and so seeing if that bystander intervention training, right, is really being effective in terms of getting the employees to step in, to see what's going on, if somebody is potentially getting, taken advantage of, or other types of suspicious activities. So I think one of the advisory board members had mentioned that they did attend, that they heard a lot of positive constructive feedback from the employees that participated and completed that program. And so we're hoping that, you know, as we continue to offer it every 90 days, this isn't a one-time thing, we will also begin starting to do compliance checks next year. We just rolled out the program in March of this year, so we want to give it at least a full cycle, right, before we start checking in on the businesses as there's turnover with employees, et cetera, especially in the hospitality industry. You know, that is the purpose, right, that we're requiring that repetitive training and making sure. And again, the performance metric, though, will be looking at the number of incidents that are reported.
Thank you. And I would suggest that, and perhaps you've already thought of this, not just number of incidents reported, but really meeting with the businesses all over again, with their managers, with their security, and with the employees, to get feedback on what their experience has been. I think that is also a way to measure outcomes as well.
Absolutely, Mayor Protem. We can do that.
With respect to Shane and his comment, I echo Councilmember Erickson, although I would say that I would like an earlier report back, Captain Mulder, and then 30 days is just too long. I know that Shane had reached out to me about this, and it has been a long time, so I would like a, and you can, you know, I know the investigation is important, so at least let all of city council know, maybe within a week, what's going on with this case, what the next plan is. The fact that we have limited resources, that's why it is taking too long, is unacceptable. It's absolutely unacceptable. So I think I've heard this now from other folks that are being told, we have limited resources, we have limited resources, we have limited resources. That is not a great answer. So I would like to know what you are specifically going to do differently with your investigators, deputies, so that this doesn't remain the answer. Those are all the questions I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Horvath?
Thank you, Mayor. Danny, I'm going to start with you, if you don't mind. So first, I know that often our city's No Before You Go campaign is a special event that advisory board members have typically been responsible for, and those are special events that the officials come together to raise awareness about that campaign. But what is the ongoing, daily effort in helping people be proactively prepared before they go out to a nightlife establishment in our city?
Yeah, and thank you for the question, Councilmember Horvath. So imbibe intelligently is something that is comprised of our Social Services Division, as well as Communications, that has that on our social media platforms. You know, they also push that out on our bus stops and the smart bus stops that we have, and it's on the city's website. And so aside from that, there, you know, we're not doing proactive outreach, if that's what you're mentioning, but we're trying to push that out. That is kind of the proactive effort that we're trying to accomplish through that. You know, given visitors that we're hoping will, as they're coming to the city, they'll go on the city's website, right, they'll see that on that social media platform. But there is an obstacle, because, you know, we, it's not like we can just focus on the community members ourselves, because we have so many folks that are visiting and coming in. But something that we can certainly look into is with, you know, our security ambassadors as well, that are out there, is designing maybe even like a handout as they're out and about, and maybe getting them to proactively also kind of hand out this information that speaks to all the resources that we have for the visitors that are coming in, I think could be something we could do.
Yeah, I'm, just personally, I'm happy to hear if you think that's an effective tactic. Personally, when I'm out, I'm not going to look at a card that I'm handed out when I'm, you know, when I'm going out, but I do know that there are other ways that information can be communicated when businesses and other entities are working in partnership. So whether it's information that's provided in bathrooms, that people, when people go access restrooms at some of these nightlife establishments, if they can be, you know, a lot of these places, obviously, every place should be checking IDs before, to make sure that age appropriate, you know, all of that. So perhaps there's information that we can train security guards to provide people with, or maybe there's a QR code that people can scan before they go in, so they have something already set up on their phone. Should they need a resource, it's already something they've scanned as they've gone into a business, so they're prepared before they start drinking, before they start, you know, hanging out with their friends and doing whatever they're going to do when they go to some of these places. So that way, we're proactively engaging them. And then, you're right, it doesn't matter if they're a resident or somebody who's visiting, but perhaps we could engage our Chamber of Commerce and our business community in that effort, so we are engaging them proactively. I would think that's also something we could provide on our transportation, you know, our nightlife shuttle and things like that. Again, a QR code, scan this, so, you know, know before you go, you know, something to put into your phone right away. Maybe it's a text message that we can send out, you know, through our Nixle service, but I think we need to be, we need to think like how we all go out. You know, we're not going to go out and look at a flyer and, you know, hold on to that flyer. That's just, I just don't think that's how people operate. But I do think that making sure that people know that we've gone to the trouble of accessing all of these resources and that they are available to them is very important. And along with that, I think the comment tonight about the block-by-block service, you know, making sure that that is part of that, all of that information that's being provided, so people know, hey, what's that phone number in case I need to, you know, have somebody walk me to my car or walk me home, you know, because you live up the block. So I think that's one aspect that we, we can really control in terms of proactively providing that information and engaging our business community and, you know, in that effort, so people are prepared, at least they're provided that information. In terms of what we're looking at tonight, you know, I know we're, we've had issues of assaults mentioned, but I think we're also looking at issues of over-serving, whether it be alcohol or cannabis, which was mentioned tonight. How are these incidents being reported or discussed in any way by the Business License Commission to track if there are problematic businesses that have repeat reports of these incidents? How is the Business License Commission involved in that and monitoring the businesses in our community?
Yeah. In terms of the cannabis businesses, that actually is something that was brought forth by the Business License Commission to receive kind of updated, ongoing reports of the types of incidents that are being reported in the volume of that. And so we'll be continuing to do that. You know, as of right now, we don't have, you know, all of our consumption lounges, obviously, up in operation. Licenses have been issued, and so it gives us that opportunity to certainly meet with them, discuss kind of the training aspect, look at some of the ideas that we've heard this evening, and then work out to try to see, you know, what we can put in place to make sure that their employees, obviously, are identifying that type of activity that's occurring. As it relates to alcohol, we are not, you know, providing a report to the Business License Commission, so that's definitely something we can work with our West Hollywood Sheriff's Station in terms of seeing what types of calls for service that are coming in as they relate to that, and then being able to provide a similar report that we're doing for cannabis establishments to the Business License Commission.
There may be reasons to or not to do such a thing. However, I just, I just want to raise the, you know, for our staff and our city attorney to discuss whether, you know, we have, at the Public Safety Commission, we have regular reports of, you know, crime stats that are provided by the sheriff's department or code stats that are provided. Perhaps those stats can become a regular part of reporting to business license, so we understand if there are businesses that have particularly problematic practices that need particular focus from the city or some sort of remediation, that we are aware of that and we're engaging actively in that conversation, so people know we're paying attention.
Yeah, absolutely. And we do, so that everyone here is aware, we do partner with the Alcoholic Beverage Control as well, which is the state agency, right, responsible for alcohol-related incidents that occur at the establishment. So if there are things that, whether it's a code enforcement officer that sees that in the late evening hours, maybe they're staying open a little too late, maybe they're hearing that from community members as well, or even our entertainment policing team. So we are working with them on those issues and those cases. But yes, absolutely.
Okay. Sergeant Yost, if you would, please. So thank you for being willing to provide us with the information on the training that the department provides, the deputies and all personnel. Is that, is that training that you've gone through personally as part of the department?
I have gone to the Santa Monica Rape Treatment Briefing. She had in-service training. I have attended that, yes.
Okay. Is there any other training that you've gone through, through the department?
In regard, yes, I have attended different trainings for LGBTQ training.
Can you tell me about what the department provided you in your training?
Just knowledge and background on information, flags regarding how, you know, the flags and the different flags, and just basic breakdown of-
Okay. And who provided that training for you in the department?
It was through the, our Sheriff's Information Bureau has information on that.
Okay. And you, I think you're also in charge of the-
And you, I think you're also in charge of the volunteers that, that operate out of the West Hollywood Station as well, right?
I am, yes.
Okay, so do you provide our volunteers with that training? Or are they provided any sort of training under your watch?
We have a volunteer coordinator program. I will bring that forward to them, but I have not personally put on any of that training. I think that's a great idea to have them.
Okay. So, so I think, you know, you're a sergeant and you haven't, you know, there's only certain training that you've gone through, you're not exactly sure what the department offers overall, and our volunteers aren't getting that training. So I think there's a lot of opportunity for improvement there in terms of making sure that the folks who are supposed to be responding from our station are appropriately prepared for the kinds of incidents and issues that, that could come up in a nightlife destination like ours. I will say I'm recognizing that this is a nightlife safety discussion. I'm disappointed that we don't have that information tonight, but I do know that, you know, this will, this is not a one-time conversation, and clearly there's community interest in this discussion, so I suspect it will be ongoing. What information is provided to someone who makes a report, whether they are reporting an assault, or whether they're reporting being drugged at a nightlife establishment? What resources are they given after they make that report at the Sheriff's Station?
They are given a victim information pamphlet that discusses the different programs that are available to them, and a breakdown of what will occur.
Do you know what's in that information that they're provided? What kind of resources they're given?
I would have, I would have to look at it. I honestly haven't looked at it in a few months to give you exact what's inside of it.
Okay, well, I, I think it's important that everyone at the station, not just you, but I know you're answering our questions tonight, but everyone at the station should know what, what those resources are. They should be able to say, "These are the services that the city provides, these are the places that you can go, and these are, you know, this is what the city of West Hollywood provides, whether or not you're a resident." So I think that's a big area for improvement, Danny. We can work with the Sheriff's Department on making sure that, that everyone in the station has that information. And Sergeant, how do you track the reports that come in? We often rely, as you know, at the Public Safety Commission and the City Council meetings, there's been a lot of discussion of statistics. And so how do you track that data that comes in through reporting? How do we know that the reports that come into your office are then reported to us accurately? How, how is that data tracked in the station?
So all information is entered into a program called LARCSIS, which then keeps track of a file number. So whenever a report is taken, a deputy would go in and create a file number. That file number is now a document that goes along with that report, and from there, it is tracked to who, what detective it was assigned to, and what is the moving forward parts of it. With that information, it lists where area the crime occurred and what the crime was based on information within that report number that they create.
So I know you often educate the community about knowing what the tag number is in terms of a call for service. Does that tag number correspond in any way to the file number that you just mentioned?
It would. So when a call is created, when a person calls a station and a call is typed in, it creates a tag number. That tag number is what the deputy responds to. And then from there, when they pull a file number, it is pulled from that particular tag number. So it pulls up into the system, the system is, gives a description of everything, and from there, they would pull a number, and they're required to put in that tag number, and it associates with it.
Okay, so it sounds like in a situation like this, when someone comes in and files a report, they should not only be provided a tag number, but also be made aware of what their file, corresponding file number is, so they're able to track the information as it relates to following a report within the department?
Yes, the report number is the number that would be used for that. The tag number wouldn't necessarily be able to track much, other than we would be able to look that up and reference it. So if they had a tag number for that particular incident, but they didn't have a file number, we could reference that tag number and find if the file number, but it's much easier if they have that file number, then we can just access it straight from that number.
And I think it's helpful for us, because if we ask for a tag number and there's no corresponding file number, we might have a question then about what happened in this report? Was there a report filed? What happened to the information that came in through that, through that incident? Because it was tagged with a certain number, but there isn't, if there isn't a file number after that. And I know that some of those questions were raised here tonight, so I just wanna make sure that we're thinking about how do we help people have the info. You understand your system, but I think the general, it's clear the general public doesn't really understand how information works once it gets into your system. And so I think helping us understand what questions to be asked when, you know, God forbid, somebody's in a situation like this, so that way they're getting all of the information, because we don't all speak the, the department language.
No, so when a report is written, they are given, that pamphlet has a line on it that we write the full file number on. So when a report is taken, they're given that pamphlet that has the file number on it.
Okay, so a tag number and a file number will be provided, and then, once you have that file number, who can you, who can someone then go to in the department with that file number to get information about a report?
So say a report was generated from West Hollywood Station, they could reach out to our desk or, and request detectives. Detective Division would be able to access that and know who that report was assigned to.
So is it only detectives that can access, if someone has a file number? Is it only detectives in the department that can access that file?
No, other people can access it. It's just easier for detectives, because they have, not all deputies have access to the program to look into that, but detectives can easily get into there and access it.
So a detective, a sergeant, a lieutenant, a captain, a commander, every, those, those tiers within your hierarchy will have access, but not perhaps every deputy?
Correct.
Okay, so somebody who filed a report in West Hollywood Station, for example, could have a file number and go to another station and ask a detective at another station to look up that file number?
They could, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's, that's really helpful in terms of clarity. I think a couple of suggestions, just based on what I've heard tonight. One thing that we learned through, and thank you for raising the issue of domestic violence, through our Community Response Team to Domestic Violence in West Hollywood, was that not, you know, people, if there isn't public trust in reporting, they might, people might not report to the places that we expect them to, encourage them to. And so sometimes people might not report, for example, to law enforcement, but they may go to the LGBT Health Center, for example, for health services and report there. How often do you, or does the department, not you personally, how often does the department follow up with Cedars, with the Rape Treatment Center, with the LGBT Center, Men's Health Center, or Planned Parenthood, which I think all serve West Hollywood? How often do you follow up with them to hear the numbers or types of reports they receive regarding potential criminal activity?
I would have to reach out to our Detective Bureau to see how often they're doing that. I don't know that answer.
When you were a detective, how often did you do that?
I, I didn't work those specific crimes, so I didn't do that. I never, I didn't really ever have to do that.
Okay, so I think it's important that that become a standard part of reporting in West Hollywood. I would obviously like to see it department-wide. It sounds like there's willingness from the station to adopt slightly different protocols than the broader department here in West Hollywood. So if that's the case, I think that should become standard practice in our station, that there's monthly follow-up from these health centers that serve our city, and to correspond to the reports that you're getting in the station to see what sort of disparities might exist between reporting to some of these health centers and to the station, so we can figure out if there are disparities, why? And if there, and so there's coordination and understanding, because it sounds like there's some question, at least from some of the health centers, about the role that law enforcement might play in terms of some of the reports they get, or vice versa. And I think that can help to shore up some of the differences in information. And then the last thing is that I would ask and, you know, welcome your guidance, of course, in terms of how we can standardize the process for handing over video evidence across all of our business partners. I know that there's proactive education that has happened in the past between the station and our nightlife destinations. I don't know if that's standardized to the station, if that's been ongoing training as we've gotten new nightlife establishments, but I think establishing the expectation that West Hollywood Station wants to have that evidence turned over to support reports that come in. Again, I'm not a lawyer, so if there are legal ramifications or concerns to take into account, by all means, but to the extent that we can standardize that process through our city, to make sure that any sort of video evidence related to assault, to drugging, or any of those types of incidents that have been raised tonight, that we make sure that we're doing that here in West Hollywood, so people understand what the process is here. I know I took a lot of time. Thank you very much. I tried to be thorough.
No, it's, great points. Thank you, Councilmember Horvath. Danny, I have a couple of questions, and then I'll try to keep them brief. And thank you to my colleagues for great questions and comments. So when it comes to the, I would say both bars and cannabis lounges, do we have a requirement for cameras? That they have cameras?
For the cannabis establishments, it's generally always a part of their security plan that they submit. I am unaware of any cannabis establishment that does not have cameras. We don't have a specific requirement that calls that out in detail, but all of the cannabis establishments that I have seen in terms of the security plans and the cannabis licenses that have gone before, the entire Business License Commission have all included it.
And what about our bars?
Say that again, sorry.
Bars, the bars.
For the, yeah, for the alcohol establishments, I, again, I am confident that there is not a specific requirement that says that you have to install security cameras. However, submitting a security plan is a part of their licensing process as well. And so that is definitely something that I've seen in terms of, at all the alcohol establishments. But depending on, you know, how long they keep their footage, you know, whether or not it's in operation or not, at the time, sometimes there's technological issues that occur at businesses, so, but they are more or less having them there.
Yeah, so if they're already having them there, maybe we can look at adding a condition for having cameras, and also a condition that if a crime is reported, that they have to get video to the sheriffs by a certain time, whether that's 24 hours or 48 hours, whatever that is, that they have to hold on to video for a minimum amount of time, whatever that minimum time makes sense, whether it's 72 hours. But it seems to me that, that, that if they already have the cameras, that there's no reason why we shouldn't have conditions that require, that require the cameras. And I would even go as far to say, one of the items that we had approved as a council is, is a commercial neighborhood watch, so to make sure that there are cameras over alleys and well-lit, you know, lights and cameras to ensure greater public safety. So what I've heard tonight is, I've heard, you know, that we want to make sure that we have a robust prevention plan. The QR code is a, is a great idea, and it's easy, I think, for both cannabis establishments and alcohol service, alcohol establishments to provide, whether it be in the bathroom or when, or when they're in line, you know, somewhere, on a wall. To make sure that we look at awareness programs, so awareness of the strips, awareness that block-by-block provides, I don't want to say escort service, because that doesn't sound right, but an escort service, and that way, you know, so that people are aware of it. We already have the item to bring more security ambassadors to our commercial corridors, especially on the west side, and having a kiosk, and to really focus on evening, you know, having more of them out, walking the beat when the bars are letting out, and cannabis lounges as well. And you already said that cannabis lounges actually must have security guards, as, as does, as do other cannabis businesses. So would be important for them to be, have some training as well regarding the types of things that might happen when, when people are, are participating. And I believe the item that Councilmember Erickson and I had brought forward about cannabis education included looking at training like we have in the bars, in addition to the training that we already require for the conditional use permit. And then, so I've heard about nighttime training for not only establishments, but also volunteers and block-by-block, the security ambassadors. I don't expect you to answer this, but I'm just wondering what kind of advocacy we have for victims is, as part of our social services? And that might be something, an area that we're lacking. So we may want to look at, especially as we put together the Behavioral Crisis Mobile Unit, and we're looking at adding case management for that, that, that would actually be a, probably a natural way of including case management and, and for, for someone who has reported in our city. So I would, I would ask that our Social Services Department look at that and see which of our providers can, can offer that, and, you know, if that's something that we can do. Because it seems to me that, that follow-up on this, on psychological well-being is an important aspect of this. And in addition to prevention, you also, if it does happen, you want to make sure that you're offering whatever you can to, to help the victim. Then I've heard about measuring effectiveness of the test strips and the training, et cetera. And I know that's gonna, you know, once everything, everybody's been trained, we will be looking at that, and you'll let us know how that will be measured. I think also, what else do I have? The conditions, the requirements for cameras, following up with our community partners, like Planned Parenthood and the LA LGBT Center, the expectations of our Sheriff's Department to, to make sure that, that they are, you know, reporting, they are getting the training, they are following up with our community partners. And I think that Councilmember Erickson may have a, did you have some additional comments, or you didn't?
I was just gonna ask another question about a different line of subject, but I don't want to get off topic for this.
Okay, well, I, I think everyone's kind of said it all, although I'd like to open this up for additional comments, but why don't you go ahead and ask your question?
And Mayor, I'm sorry, if I could just, I, I wanted to just bring one point of clarification. I thought these were the drink-spiking test strips that were ruled out today. In fact, these are the fentanyl, right? So, yeah, so that is definitely handled through Social Services and one of our contract providers, so we will definitely follow up and include some sort of instructions if they're not already being provided.
Excellent.
Yeah.
And you had a question?
Yes.
You have a question, and then we'll open it up.
Lots of questions, and apologies for interrupting my colleague on her question before. We all have lots of stuff to say about nighttime safety, and I'm glad you know the flags. Two questions regarding traffic safety, because this was brought up during Ciclovia yesterday. Great to see everyone. It's about nighttime traffic calming measures and safety mechanisms for individuals. So I'm concerned that there are a lot of blind spots in the city at night in this west-side area. People are taking scooters, sorry, Manny, but people are taking other things around town, and, and they do sometimes get in a dark area, and I'm afraid of someone opening a car door or safe drop-off areas for Uber and Lyft. We've talked about a couple of businesses where we could maybe better utilize some alleyways, other, other scopes of, strips of the street, you know, that's not Santa Monica Boulevard, because that causes all that backup, and we don't have bike lanes and all that stuff yet, so if people are riding by on a scooter, or biking, or walking, they, they could get injured. So I'm wondering what is... So I'm wondering what is maybe some solution to how we can bring forth better visibility on our west side? I mean, it is fairly dark by these businesses. Is it the business's responsibility? Is it our responsibility? I mean, I'm just trying to get to a better solution, because I, I almost saw someone get taken out this last weekend by a scooter, passing Palm, you know, going into that area. I mean, I just think there's a lot of mishmash happening, and I think we need to do something. So I don't know if that's, it's a very oblique direction, but I think you know where I'm going, Danny.
I do, I do, Councilmember Erickson. So definitely we'll work with our Director of Public Works and our Engineering Division. I know that they're underway in terms of looking at a study on fountains specifically, but I also know that they oversee, right, our street lighting, et cetera. And so if there's opportunities to make improvements, then most certainly we will. In terms of kind of the business responsibility, if that's something that we could speak with them about, if there are some areas that need to be improved, we can certainly work with them to try to see if there are some possibilities. But I think if most of the areas are in the public right of way, not that it would not benefit the business to have an area that is better and well-lit, even for their employees that are leaving, right, work at the end of their shift. So we can certainly work and tackle with both and get a report from Public Works or Engineering on kind of where they're at with that.
And I think since we purchased the streetlights, we're able to, and converted them, we're able to change the level of brightness, so that it's something that we can definitely, I would think we could look at. Just Mayor, oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Protam first, and then Councilmember Horvath, and then I'd like to open it up. And then we have a hard stop at eight o'clock.
We're going on that, Mayor.
Mayor, can I?
The city manager has.
Yeah, I was just going to remind us, we do have a stop at eight o'clock, and it is 7:30. I just want to make sure we hear from all of the commissioners and advisory board members. There certainly are a lot of things about nighttime safety that we can talk about, and I'm sure we'll talk about them at meetings coming up. I just want to make sure we have the opportunity to hear from everyone.
I just have a really quick, just, I would suggest for the victims' advocate staff to look at what the possibilities are in partnership with the Santa Monica Rape Treatment Center. I think that'll be very helpful for them to guide us for that. And one other thing I did not mention before is, I'd like to know, and if we don't have any of this direction to staff, to do marketing of the test strips we just gave out on our communication channels, maybe create a video. They were literally having Councilmember Horvath and I do a little presentation in the news for the test strips. So clearly, there is a need to teach folks, and I think since we're giving them out, it would be a great opportunity to get the information out as well. And one other thing is that a member of the public talked about having equity for all genders. I want to validate that, yes, trans men and cis men do have more shame and stigma around reporting sexual assaults, and gay men too. So let's make sure that we're having equity for all genders in our messaging. I think that's really important. So I'm, that's all I'm going to say now. I'm really looking forward to hearing from our board members and commissioners.
Councilmember Horvath, did you have a quick?
No, I'll, I'll speak at the end of the show.
All right, who would like, yes?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Lorne Meister. I just want it on record, for all those that are listening, there is nothing confusing about the test my drink and their cards. There's a QR code on the back, okay? So I don't know any, the, the fentanyl thing, I think there's been a confusion based on what he said earlier. I just want it on record, they're not actually like pieces of strips, these are cards. There's a QR code on the back, which means that you literally can have access to the website, okay? And there's literally people at this company that advocate and help people. They're all the way in Florida, some good things come out of Florida. The QR code literally exists on the back of every single one of these cards. It takes you to their website, it takes you to their Facebook, their Insta, they have videos, and it literally, all you have to remember, if it turns blue, you've been drugged. Think sad, think blue. There is nothing confusing on these cards, they fit literally in your pocket, and what we handed out today, and I'm, I'm honored to hear that there's going to be more sessions where we hand them out, is 10. Each card has two tests on them. This is not something that you use and throw away. This is a card the size of a business card, and there are 10 tests in one kit, and it's literally the size of a business card. And I just want to reiterate, what's wonderful about these cards is the QR codes exist. So if it's late, if it's dark, if you're alone, and you're like, oh my God, I, I don't know, I gotta, yeah, the QR code will actually give you access as well. These cards do not expire for four years. So as long as we endure a president, these cards are good, four years. I wanted to say that. And I also want to say that they're very inexpensive. I'm very honored that the City of West Hollywood and the City Council unanimously voted for this item, but I want to say that, yeah, we're not handing out millions, we're handing out thousands, but guess what? They cost a couple dollars on this website, and you can also get them on Amazon. The reason why getting these out is so vital, people don't know they exist. How can someone prevent being drugged or being assaulted if they don't even have a preventative tool? I'm going to be the person that keeps handing them out on my own, but I'm very happy to know we will keep rolling it out. I do want to second what Mayor Lorne Meister said about, I realize we're going to have, there's going to be, I'm sure, steps to see how these work, but honestly, getting them passed out and getting them to human beings is what's going to work. People don't know these exist, and they also don't know that they, not only that, but they're 99.0, excuse me, 99.9% effective. I have literally tested everything on these. I give you my word, it's not only that they work, this is how we prevent these and we get these perps, and we are actually able to prosecute these criminals doing this. And this is not just random, they're doing it again and again. So I just want to point out, in case there was confusion earlier, this is not the situation with the fentanyl strips. I don't know, I'm not an expert on those, I'm an expert on these. QR codes exist on the back of these, it's not confusing, you can literally do them on your phone in a dark club, I've done it. And then you have not only physical evidence that you've just been drugged, but you can literally walk over to the bore, off to the bar, and now you have an actual time of when you know you need to look at that footage. And I know from personal experience that when you go to the bar the next day, it's really awkward and uncomfortable to be with, in my case, a male manager as a female, who was by herself, obviously, and was only rescued by another woman who found me in the bathroom. It's not fun going back to the business by yourself, especially if you're dealing with, in my case, it was an older gentleman, who really doesn't want to have to deal with it, because they don't want to have to admit that a crime was committed. Well, you know what? This could have killed me, and some people, and do end up, it does end up affecting their lives. And I want to give praise to the incredible man that spoke earlier. Until this happens to you, you have no idea what this feels like. It is our duty to everyone that comes to this city, yes, for residents, but people I know personally will not come back here to the bars and the clubs in this beautiful city. I happen to love this city, it saved my gay father's life in the 90s. Well, guess what? There are people who will not come back here to these bars and clubs because it happened to them here, and they don't want their friends to come here because they don't want it to happen to them. This is a preventative tool, these cards are not confusing, the QR codes are on the back, and I just wanted to reiterate that. Thank you for letting me give a comment again, Mayor.
Thank you, Board Member Steele. Who, yes, Commissioner Babon.
So I want to thank everybody for their questions, and they had me really thinking. I'd like to understand and get reporting on the amount of solved rape, sexual assault, and assault cases in the city. Every month, we get the number of reported crimes, but to me, the whole conversation tonight has been about, how are we doing in catching people committing crimes against people? Property is important too, but I'd really like to see the solve rates. Secondly, I am still confused about what happens when a club owner, a sheriff, block by block, sees someone who is disoriented, alone, sick, or unconscious. Who do they call? Do they just immediately take the person? And then, we've talked a lot about training. I think everyone who is part of the city's infrastructure around safety needs to be trained and needs to be sensitive around LGBTQIA, particularly transgender, and that includes our EMT and Fire Department, because oftentimes, if someone's found unconscious, they might arrive first. I would also like to understand, whether it's EMT or Fire, who helps the person make the decision to go to either the Santa Monica Rape Treatment Center or to Cedars? That's not clear to me. And sometimes if that person isn't conscious, is that decision made for them automatically? That I'd like to understand. And then along the lines of accountability, I'd like to understand what our solve rate is for our deputies, and to understand if we have focused deputies that work in West Hollywood who have a background in nightlife safety, or if we are using county resources. Because listening tonight, it occurs to me that we know we have some very specific opportunities here, and I just, I have no idea what their solve rates are, and I don't know if they compare well, I don't know if we're using county deputies, West Hollywood specific deputies, if we have enough, not enough, but those seem to be important things to understand.
There any other comments?
And specifically around the solved rape, sexual assault, and assault cases, I know we're redoing the public safety reporting, I'd like to make sure that we have solve rates in that reporting.
Yeah, and I, I think there's been a lot of direction tonight, and it is getting late. Maybe we'll take all the comments from everyone, and we'll bring back an item at the September meeting, or later meeting, to respond to all the various comments, as well as at the Public Safety Commission meeting for some of these.
Okay, then Renee, Board Member Luna.
Oh, okay, yeah, thank you. Just real quick, first of all, thank you, Mayor, for bringing up the, you know, the cameras, I'm all for security cameras, the more, the better, that's how we're, you know, a lot of things have been caught, and a lot of people have been held accountable, not just here, I mean, everywhere, so I'd love for that to be a requirement, and I think you said it was, but. And also, that goes to what's a lot of people not feeling is safe walking home, that's what's, I've kind of gotten some feedback lately, because from people drinking, and then I think that goes to the security lights too. If they could be brighter, that would be, that would be great. Quickly, Shane reminded me, when he was saying his report was taken outside, and first of all, I'm all for, you know, harmony with the sheriffs, I've been here a long time, I remember Captain Frazier and the captain before, and there was a, you know, a lot of harmony between the residents and the sheriffs, and I think we've, maybe we've come off base a little bit, but I think this is helping us get back there, and maybe it's just been a shift in the Sheriff's Department. But a few months ago, Mary Jo and I were, walked someone to the sheriff's, say at the go-in and get some information, and we were standing outside, and two sheriffs walk up with a woman, and she could have been any one of us, she just looked like any one of us here. And she's kind of talking about, you know, we're not really paying attention, but she was saying about how she was caught off guard and attacked, and then all of a sudden we hear her say that she was raped, and the one sheriff said, you were raped? And she said, yes. And the other one asked her again, you were raped? And she said, yes, he raped me. And at that point, we walked to, we walked away, we left the parking lot, we walked to the other end, but we thought surely they're going to go inside and into a private room, and they didn't, they just, they literally stood out by the front door, and anyone hanging there like we were could have heard this. And so maybe one of the protocols, and that sounded like that was really upsetting to Shane as well, could be taking someone when it's that serious into a private room and treating it with the respect it needed, and we didn't, shouldn't have heard that, and, you know, we walked away, we didn't have to, and, but we wanted to give her privacy at that point, but it was kind of, I just was reminding of that when Shane was saying that his report was taken outside, and he felt really uncomfortable with that, and she was standing. Just the last thing real quick, which I think would really complement the, the test strips, is something called NightCapit.com. I saw this young woman on Shark Tank, and Lori Grineer invested in her, and she was really upset of all their friends and, you know, college, getting roofied and spiked, and it's a scrunchie you wear on your wrist or in your hair, and then you take it off and put it on your drink, and you put the straw in, and so it's kind of really unassuming. And also, they came up with, it's called Stop Tops for bar owners to purchase in bulk, and maybe they would, and just like putting a coaster down, you put this cover on, on the drink first, and that's, and it's hygienic and everything, and the neck could get thrown away. And the scrunchies, you know, you could re, you could buy, but maybe if we can encourage those two things too, and it would, it would just be another deterrent for a drink to be spiked. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Luna.
Hi, I think the questions and discussion we had so far has been brilliant, and I'm seeing a lot of opportunities for growth and change here. One thing that I want to speak to specifically is in relation to the trainings. I am a person that's offered thousands of trainings to either sheriffs, or LAPD, or City of L.A., or nonprofits, or businesses. Back in my former capacity at the L.A. LGBT Center, I had further training for the Sheriff's Department in 2019. And from my recollection, it was about maybe 100 people at the Park Auditorium with a couple of, like, seats laid out. We had sheriffs and block by block present. But when, after my training, and this was alongside with my colleague at the time at the center, Mary Case, who works at the Legal Advocacy Project for Survivors, she still works there. This training was intended to be like trans and non-binary sensitivity, and domestic violence, sexual assault, and stalking, and how to provide competent care for these people, our people. And mind you again, this is 2019. So it's been a while since we've done this training. And not just that, but I think when I spoke with the people afterward, I wanted to get a sense of how many, how, how long have people been there at the Sheriff's Department working, and what kind of work are they doing, who are they interfacing with? And from my experience after the training, it felt like it was mostly people who just started or just transferred to the station. And my, my wish was that we could train everyone, that we would be able to do this training more often. At the center, I was doing this perhaps every year or so. I think that's not enough. I think we need to do this maybe quarterly, or, or at least semiannually. But the challenge there that lies in hand is that, in addition to my responsibilities at the center, providing case management, providing outreach to homeless individuals, I was also juggling trainings for agencies that requested them, and that was a little bit much to put on one person. And I think that's what really requires a lot of strategic initiatives, whether it's with the, with our advisory board, at the Trans Advisory Board, with the LGBT Advisory Board, with other providers like Trans Can Work, with other individual consultants who offer this, this kind of training, so that we're able to think collectively and strategically, strategically of how we can make this more effective for everyone. Offering one training once a year isn't going to catch everyone, but perhaps we can look at this of like, instead of an e-learning course that we offer through the, through a contract with the City of Los Angeles, where all employees, including Fire, EMT, everyone, first responders, they're all required to undergo a e-learning course on trans sensitivity, or whether that's a monthly meeting with LAPD where we, to talk about what's going on in the community. LAPD offers a space for health centers, like the LGBT Center, like other nonprofits like St. John's Wellness, Trans Latino Coalition, to be able to make those reports, or to at least share that something happened, and have a conversation of how we can provide that competent care for everyone. So there are a number of ways to be able to make this happen here in City of West Hollywood as well, and I hope that we can continue this conversation beyond this, and think more strategically, so it doesn't just fall on one individual person or one department, or the, the Information Bureau, whoever is responsible, because clearly, it, it needs improvement, and we can all chip in here. And so I'm happy to offer my expertise, having worked here for the last five years, and I'm happy to also talk about what tragedy can look like, or what effective models can look like as well.
Thank you, Board Member Luna. Yes, Commissioner Steele.
Oh, thank you. Okay, so a couple things. One, I'm, while I'm glad we're doing this, I'm a little bit disappointed that this hasn't been more of a dialogue. I feel like we've spent a lot of time having a Q and A, when some of the things that could have been answered, could have been answered by people at this, these tables, that have been doing this work for months and months and months, not just with our sheriff and our public safety team, but with organizations in question, right? So like, for example, I'll just answer Commissioner Babon's question, between 2016 and 2021, a report came out in January that there were 30 sexual assaults tied to drink spiking incidents in the City of West Hollywood, and only three of those have cases filed with the DA. We don't have a current update on those, that information came out in a report in January. I asked council at that time to take action, I asked other folks at that time to take action, and we're having this conversation today, because several folks have driven this movement forward. movement forward. We also haven't had an updated report with this specific information laid out, and I think that it's important. And I, although I won't list the business, I do think it matters and to have transparency about which businesses. For example, in that report alone, 53% of the sexual assaults occurred with one-owned establishment. And so it matters, right? And what I asked in January, which I will posit again, is when we see this happen, when we see a pattern of this undeniable nature that has reports and statistics right here provided by the sheriff, which we appreciate that transparency, what happens? What is the sit-down? What is the phone call? What are the steps? We get caught up in the liability hot potato, but these are human beings. As it relates to Shane, I also wanted to point out that part of the conversation is about the handoff and handover between services and the connectivity between services, right? Shane's detective was from Wood Ear, so we're firing a lot of questions at these two officers and to sheriff tonight, and they're not the point person on that case, right? I've been working with Shane for months and months and months and months, so I can tell you that. The day that the case got dismissed, the day, which was a holiday, which was horrifying, it's about the empathy and communication, so there's so much of that, but I'll go back to my notes. Before I do, I'd like to suggest that council develops a sexual assault task force, similar to the social justice task force, where a dedicated group of us who are community-based stakeholders can put together some real robust work to then come back to council with. Because the second thing that are, I think I'm off on ones and twos, but the other thing that has happened is a lot of direction to staff on things that either are already in motion or exist, and I think we can help really put something focused together that will help achieve what council's after, what community's after, but in a more cohesive way, that isn't putting so much on staff and the sheriff to come up with certain things when we know what is missing to a large degree because of the work that's already being done. And I'm sorry it's late, I hope that makes sense, as it is in my head. We do need to talk about a more robust training across the board, I think, to Board Member Luna's point, it's something I love to see. One of the things that happens when we discuss this, and it happens every few months or so, we hear, oh, well, Trans Can Work, who Love has done a training, and this group has done a training. I've already talked to the LASD LGBTQ liaison officers and had some dialogue about overall LASD cultural competency within the LGBTQ space and intersectionality. And so we really need to take a fresh 2022 look, and in that, we have an opportunity, which is great, to take a fresh look at what is that now? What's the competency that we need to have, right? And so, to the point of systems and services, we all don't even know, and we're here, and we're invested, and we love this city, and we don't know it, right? So I'm not shocked that we don't have full answers, but I don't think any of us have those answers. I think we need to create something fresh. And maybe that's 2023, maybe we have a task force that does this body of work, and then we look to do something in 2023. I think it's important to get it right, and this issue's always going to be an issue. So in terms of the training, you know, the other thing is that I think we need to have things a little bit more streamlined with the bodies and the boards and commissions, and how we're utilizing them. I think we have a great opportunity with them, but a lot of times, it'll go to the boards and commissions, and that's not necessarily related to just tonight, I hear it on a regular basis. But what happens is, number one, you're assuming folks on specific boards have more engagement in one topic than the other, as opposed to the robust community we have to tap into, right? And so, for example, when we're talking about sexual assault and stigma and all those things, we must talk to the disability community, we must tap there, we must have this stay with the Women's Advisory Board, as well as the Trans Advisory Board and the LGBTQ Plus Advisory Board. All of them are important, but a lot of, I really suggest this as a structured piece for forward motion. So many times, we say, oh, well, it'd go to this council and that council, and then it goes, or that board, excuse me, it goes to the board of the body without a really formatted discussion, right? So what happens is you're not able to track a workable metric. So you've got dialogues that are happening, some kind, sometimes are unguided, sometimes the information's not clear, as opposed to, this is the topic, this is what we're looking to get, these are the three things we'd like you to cover, I'm spitballing it, but you get my point. And then you get something robust from each of these bodies that offers you something to work from. So I'd just like us to maybe think about that process and how we move forward, and how we can maximize all of these conversations and make sure that we don't leave anyone out, including, and certainly gay men, and I did hear that as well, and I've spoken about it several times, so I appreciate that public comment. Also, are the cannabis businesses required to have LGBTQ inclusive training? You know, the conversation about this cultural competency, it is not just the sheriff, it is not just the bar staff, it is security. Security is a huge touchpoint for people, and these exchanges are so triggering and so hurtful to community, when we don't have folks that are culturally competent. And these folks, like detectives that are working in other cities, we may have our folks trained, we may get to a place where we go, wow, we have sheriffs doing great, we've got this training. When your case gets handed off to a detective, and you're a trans man, and they're from a place that doesn't have the same competency or care, it's a big problem. So it's really about those wraparound services and intersecting with agencies. And then also, we need to get a copy of the training that's been provided by the sheriffs for the LGBTQ, not to critique it, but to work together to build something that's fresh from the ground up. I've talked to Captain Mulder about this, who's been tremendously receptive to that dialogue. And then also, the advocacy, I think, is a big conversation, so I appreciate that. I do want to mention that from the lens of the LGBTQ community, that cameras can be very dangerous and harmful in queer spaces, and our community does not want to be, I don't know that that solves the issue of bar staff, bar managers, sheriffs, and care providers doing their jobs. It's not a matter that we don't know this is happening, it's a matter of what's happening in terms of prevention, but also the service care provided. And so I don't think more eyes on community in that way is helpful, but I love the lighting, and I love the cameras in the alleys, and I think that's brilliant. And then also, in terms of marketing, I think we need to revisit this and meet people where they are at. I agree with Councilmember Horvath in terms of when you're going out and what you're going to look at and what you're going to get. We have city videos, we have staff do them, they're fantastic. But I'd love to look at something a little bit different and a little bit fresh. How do we do something engaging that targets people where they're at? Branding and marketing do this all the time, every single day, with geo-targeted ads and specifically placed ads and information. There are plenty of people who are astute in this, our city staff can only take things so far, and they do a great job. Those are city communications. We need to bring on some marketing experts, experiential teams, and really build some robust programming to help us support. What does the sheriff do? When do you call them? What does Block by Block do? What are our rape service and our assault service providers do? Who do you call when, and what's that gap, and what's that process? Because like I said, we don't all even know, it's not a clear thing. So I'd love us to take a look at that, and I think the task force can help. I don't want to take any more time, but I'd like to see a more robust, engaged conversation, I think, where we can really start to build some of the how-to's together. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Steele. And yeah, that is definitely something that our Communications Department can be putting out daily on social media, what information you would have with a QR code. Yeah, sorry. Board Member Lazarus.
I'm heartened by this discussion as it happens at all. I appreciate it and everyone's time. I agree thoroughly with Councilmember Jackie Steele. I think there are a lot of places for improvement, including maybe training education liaisons for new businesses or businesses that exist here, such that we don't have a situation in which we are demanding too much of Board Member Luna, or any council or advisory committee in and of itself. I didn't know of many of the opportunities we have for safety within this community before joining this board, and that doesn't make sense because they live here, too. I would ask as well, as it goes with marketing or just initiatives within the city, are we looking at the correct KPIs? Because I don't think it makes sense for bystander training to be attributed to number of sexual assault cases. There are many, many different reasons why factors could contribute to fluctuating numbers of assaults, perhaps, something different, like how many bystanders are intervening when we're seeing assault happening. But that goes back to Councilmember Steele's point, and I love the concept of text, having all this information in a single text that goes out in a geo-targeted ad that happens once you drop a location at any of our bars or restaurants during a certain, you know, night or period of time during that evening, with just a block of information, here is what the city has as a resource, you get it anyway, you don't need to text for it. I love some of these ideas, and I'd like to push them further.
Okay. Councilmember Erickson.
I know David's going to kick us out in two minutes, so I won't say much more. Danny, somebody's mentioned the escort services by Block by Block. Could you, you are getting a workout tonight, could you get us the numbers? I would really love to know, like, how many people have utilized it? For example, if it's like five in the last year, that's like, oops, we need to do more communication, marketing. It is a great service, I know we've all talked about it, I know a lot of people talk about it, it's really wonderful. That could be, that could be done for later. But I do want to end this in a question, I believe Mayor Protem Sepi-Shine did talk about Shane's case about getting back with information in a week, I think is the direction or question that was given. I would like to end with follow-up on that before we leave here, because although I don't want to, this isn't the right word, expose Shane more to trauma that they have experienced in this way, I do look at Shane as a representational figurehead for how we can continue to solve this issue. So I would like to either have it, not me, you're probably not the person to answer this, or from our sergeant or our captain about when we will get follow-up on that information, when will that be taken forward? And I think in Mayor Protem's direction, in less than a week, because one is too many, and we have someone that we all know and love who serves our, our community, and we need, we need to make sure that person gets justice. So I don't know how we can end on that note.
And Councilmember Erickson, so the Block by Block does provide and keep track of the safety escort, so we can definitely provide that information, yeah. And Sergeant Yost, I don't know if...
Regarding that, tomorrow morning, I will look into this, I will get more information from you after this. And from there, I will, tomorrow morning, I will research and find out what exactly was going on with that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your comments and your questions, and we know we still have a lot of work to do on this, and it will be coming back, and it'll probably be coming back again. City Manager, do you have any final comments before I adjourn?
We have a number... Sorry. We have a number of people taking notes, and we have the videos. So we will try to respond to all the ideas and comments in one comprehensive response that we will provide to this group, and then place on the council agenda, hopefully for September, if not the first meeting in October.
Thank you. And if there's nothing else, then I'm going to adjourn this meeting to its, City Council to its next regular meeting, which will be on Monday, September 19th, at 6:00 p.m. at West Hollywood Park, Public Meeting Room, Council Chambers. Thank you very much, everyone, for being here, appreciate it.